We're gonna, we're gonna start in a minute or two, but I suggest everybody stand up and look out the window at that amazing sunset before we start. More, more to the left than to the right. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting, November 1st, 2018, 6 o'clock, Committee of the Whole. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Fleck?
I'm here.
Mr. Guerin?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Okay, we have a quorum, and I would like to invite Julie McLaughlin to come up and introduce our special guest who will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us. These individuals that were chosen here, that are standing here, were chosen by their teachers as leaders in the school. And Martin Elementary is starting a student ambassador program this year. These students, they had to take time to fill out an application, and we read through the applications, it was very tough decisions to decide. And unfortunately, these students are going to continue to be leaders in other ways, and we wanted them to come and represent Martin tonight as the Pledge of Allegiance, Pledge of Allegiance? All right, let's make up words, Mrs. McLaughlin, right? So how about if you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves and tell them what grade you're in? All right?
I'm Minat. And I am in 5th grade, and I'm in Martin Elementary.
I am Kimmy, and I am in 4th grade.
I'm Dylan, and I am in 5th grade.
I'm Julia, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Nadia, and I'm in 4th grade.
All right, let's please stand, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to have these young leaders now come up, and you get to take our seats, and you're gonna take over the meeting for a few minutes, okay? So come on up. Parents, please come up, take all the pictures you want. All right, you, you guys do look like leaders up there, that's very nice. I, I had a list of questions that I was gonna ask you, that I had written down before you even came here, but then I heard about what your, how you got picked to be here, so I'm gonna ask you about that first, so. Congratulations on being selected as leaders in your school. How long ago did you get selected to do this? Week ago, day ago, an hour ago? I'll ask you.
Well, these individuals, let me clarify a little bit with this. We have multiple people
Oh.
become leaders, and they were chosen by their teachers to be future leaders.
Oh.
And the student ambassador program, they unfortunately are not gonna be one of the ambassadors at Martin, but they are going to be a leader at Martin.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry.
That's awesome. No, that's, that's, that's perfectly great. All right. How about this? How was Halloween? Good? Everybody have a good Halloween? Did you get a lot of candy? Did you get enough candy? Okay. Now, we, Halloween starts, and we're starting to get into all sorts of holidays that are coming up. What other holidays are coming up?
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, and then?
Christmas.
Christmas, okay. Good, so. And it seems like school just started, do you think school's flying by this year, or no? Yes, okay. What do you think? Do you think it's flying by?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good. Okay, now I'm gonna go down the line, just can answer whatever you want here. What is your favorite class so far? What favorite subject?
My favorite subject is math, reading, and art, and I even like library.
Oh. I should say, what subjects do you not like? Okay, what is your favorite subject?
Music.
Music, very good.
Math.
Math, okay.
Art.
Art?
P.E. and math.
Okay, excellent, excellent. That's good. Well, I wanna thank you guys for coming up and leading us in the pledge, and taking some time out of your evening to, to help us out with the meeting, okay? We're gonna come around to the back, we're gonna take some pictures with you guys, more pictures for ya, and then we'll get on with the rest of the meeting, okay? Thanks a lot. There we go, Tony's here.
Come on, Tony, Tony, come on.
It's not a picture without Tony.
Can you see me yet?
All right, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, guys, good job.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment today?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Then we will move on with a revision and adoption of the agenda. So I'm gonna go through here, and, let's see, we got items there, there. It looks like, I don't have any legislative updates for, on item nine. Up to that point, is there anybody that doesn't have a report or anything? I see items listed specifically before that, so. Let's see. Is there anything in community relations and student outreach? Okay, very good. Then with that, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of item nine. Is there a second? Okay? And I think that's a voice vote, isn't it? All those in favor? All right, opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so moving on. Curriculum Committee, take it away, Mr. Guerin.
All right, thank you. 5 dot 1, Huntley High School Course Proposals, Dr. Schlichter.
So that's the time of year right now that you'll see the course proposals for approval for next year, and I think as you've seen over the course of the past few years, we've really been honing the course proposals to try to align with our strategic plan objectives, and so you'll see that they're organized into sort of chunks, and so we're looking at some course proposals that align with a pathway that's, that we're looking toward in CTE. You'll see some course proposals align with academies that we have underway, some align with college and career readiness in the form of dual language. Some of them are really just cleanup, which is, you know, splitting a, a year-long course into semesters, which typically gives kids more flexibility, or changing a name just to make it more accurate. And then the last is just student interest, and so you'll see the list of courses on the second page, and then, of course, the course proposals that are a little bit more detailed in the pages that follow. Just a blanket statement, then any of the budgetary items are things that we would be placing into the FY '20 budget, and those are things that we've been working with Mr. Altmeier and are absolutely expected, and we'd be able to place into the budget with no problem, working with the high school, with Mr. Bealan and Mrs. Kish on staffing projections, and, and looking forward at what are the needs there. The only course that I would just highlight is to bring your attention to the incubator. If you recall, when we had the preliminary discussion of the CTE pathways and some of those ideas that we have going forward, we did mention that you would receive a little bit later this year, a real concrete proposal and timeline for the implementation of the pathways, but that we did wanna get rolling with incubator as quickly as possible, because we believe that business incubator is an awesome opportunity for kids, and we don't really want to wait if we can do that now. So in our typical course proposal timeline, anything that we would wanna implement next year, we would bring to you now for approval, and so you see that incubator course. I am gonna say about that, that it's a, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a heavy lift in terms of making sure that we have the facilities, making sure that we have the right staff member, doing some retrofitting of facilities to really make it the best it can be. If the course is, is approved, which would be next week by the board, that's when the high school would then go forward, making sure that we had the right student registration, just like any other course. We would not go forward retrofitting a facility if we didn't have enough students to run the course, but we, we don't wanna market it to kids before the board approves it, and so that's when we're gonna go forward with surveying kids, marketing it, getting those registrations, and then we would have plenty of time to get it up and running through the spring semester. So just wanted to make a little comment about that, because that one's a little bit more costly, and it really is one of the anchor pieces of our new pathways. So with that, I'll just take any questions, and Mr. Bealan's available as well for questions.
Questions?
Yeah, and the incubator course that mentions outside, experts and entrepreneurs, is there a sense for where those folks are gonna come from?
Yeah, we've actually had some outreach already to some businesses. We've got a great, I guess I would say roadmap to follow from other districts who've had sort of methods to reach out. The Chamber is a potential source as well, we had mentioned that in our, in our meeting. For us, we're just not wanting to reach out till the course is approved. We've had definitely preliminary interest from quite a few local business owners just in conversation, and once we get that approval and we're moving forward with actually implementing, we're gonna have some people ready to jump at it. That will be an ongoing, I guess I would say an ongoing push, though, because we're gonna, that's something we're continually, we would be outreach each year to new business owners, different business owners, depending on what the interests of the kids are.
Okay.
And then one other question, if I may, on the accounting course. What makes it from its existing model to a dual credit? What's added to make that happen?
Yeah, so it, it's a real, actually, simple answer. The first part of the answer is that it will align with the curriculum at MCC, which is really only a slight adjustment from what we're currently doing. It'll be taught by a teacher who is certified to teach dual credit. Just a bigger picture piece is we've been working real hard with MCC, because MCC is following the Illinois Community College Board guidelines for what teachers are able to teach dual credit. The ICCB, the Illinois Community College Board, has a minimum set of guidelines for each subject, saying if a high school teacher's gonna teach dual credit, they have to have this certification. Sometimes, community colleges in the past have wanted something a little bit higher than that, saying, oh, you have to have a master's in your subject matter, which a lot of high school teachers don't, they have masters in curriculum. So we've really pushed hard, and, and the new administration at MCC has been a great partner, working with Dr. Rowe and with me, to really push their departments to say, no, we're not gonna set an artificial bar there that keeps our high school kids out of dual credit. So that, the other real simple answer is we're adding dual credit classes as quickly as we can get our teachers certified to do so. In accounting, we had that path now, so we're just adding it, it's just a shift from our current class. It'll be a more rigorous class, but it won't be, I'm gonna say, a substantial difference for kids, to the point that anybody would be left out or anything like that.
Any other questions from the committee, or anyone else? Mr. Fleck?
Yes, the, the splitting of Digital Photo II into two semester courses, would a student need to take two before they can take three, or is it something that they could, if they aren't available that semester, and three's only offered the next semester, can they take it?
Let me actually toss that question to Mr. Bealan.
I got, got the budget. I seen that, I seen that old too often. As part of the Fine Arts Academy, and how the point system works for the academy, for students in order to accumulate the points that they need, splitting the courses is easier to calculate for, for them. They may take Digital Photography II the first semester, and then III the second semester, so again, it, it falls just within the structure of why the academy is created the way it is.
Is two a requirement to take prior to three?
Yes.
That was how I was supposed to ask the question.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I've got one before you go, and this may be a little bit nitpicky. Regarding the percussion course, do those students that are in the percussion course, when they start doing concerts or get involved with the concerts, how do they participate with the rest of the music group to incorporate their percussion? Because if they're a separate breakout course, it's kinda hard to integrate them, because they're already in a devoted hour that's not concert band or orchestra.
Great question. I have talked with Kevin about just kind of the structure of, of what he's doing with the program down there, and I know that they, they do do breakout sessions, they do come together as full band, but they do breakout sessions to focus specifically on, we have a lot of students that are involved in percussion outside of, of Huntley, but allowing them the opportunity, they don't have enough space within where they're working.
Sure.
And so when they created this course, it was more so just allowing them the space to be able to do what they needed to do.
Okay.
As well as working solely with their percussion instructor who comes into the building, and works solely with those students.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that they're, whatever the demands are on those kids, because at some point, you have to put the different orchestral or, or musical sections together in order to perform.
Yeah, they don't ever work separately and then come together just for the concert.
Exactly, exactly. And so having them in a, in their own breakout session doesn't give them a chance to integrate, and that's all that I wanna make sure is.
Yeah, no, the integration definitely is there, yeah.
Okay.
And some are just at a higher level than others, those that have been in the band for longer, that are taken a little bit more advanced and more focused in technical skillwork.
Okay. Is there plans to have a, a more advanced one, or is the percussion people will just continue to enroll in this one year after year?
That.
The description says beginner level, but, so that tells me that there's gonna be an advanced level or intermediate level at some point.
In the future, there could potentially be, especially with the onset of our Fine Arts Academy, and increasing some of the coursework, that is definitely a possibility.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you. Any other questions? No other questions, I would recommend we'll move that to the board meeting next week, and then we will move on to 5 dot 2, the Illinois School Report Card. Dr. Schlichter, again.
Thank you. So several weeks ago, it feels like a long time now, but you heard a nice lengthy presentation, very detailed, about the school report cards, and then we've had some updates about some of the timelines and challenges, and how things are moving forward, and I am pleased to report that this week, this was sort of our, our big week, we were monitoring a lot of things, sort of minute to minute, and the school report cards did open up on time. We also did get our official letter, which we were anxiously awaiting, stating all of our final summative designations. Dr. Rowe and the principals got that letter, and so pleased to report now that, given our final summative designations, we have one exemplary school, which is Lickie, and the rest of our schools, all of them are in the commendable status, and so we are extremely proud of that on several counts. Having an exemplary school is quite an accomplishment, that means they're in the top 10% of schools in that category, which would be elementary in the state, which is a great accomplishment. And then also very, very proud that Marlo has corrected. Definitely gave us a great opportunity to reexamine how we're serving our kids as we always do, we're glad we have supports in place, but we're also really, really pleased that we have that commendable status at Marlo, and I think it's safe to say that the Marlo staff was really excited, too, when you told them. We have started some of our first PD, though, related to the planning for serving our EL subgroup, so all of those supports are going forward regardless. We just don't have to do it under the cloud of an underperforming designation, which is fantastic. In the memo you see, and it will just be a little review of some of the other pieces that are in the report card, the state is, is really billing it as a new report card. I believe they are intending to continue adding components that they share from each district in each building, year over year, to make it more and more transparent, but that is sort of the summary of what's there. You'll see at your place, a fairly lengthy packet, we are required by school code to present publicly the, you haven't had a chance to review them since you sat down, probably, it's 136 pages. These are the PDF. These are the, and these are the PDF report cards that are available publicly, and so these will be posted to our website, and again, the requirement is not approval, or extreme examination, or detailed questioning, or anything like that, unless we have the need to do so, but really just to present it. The other thing is I would urge any board member, community member, teacher, if they really wanna dig in, probably a little more friendly to go to the Illinois Interactive Report Card online, where you can click, instead of looking through that long gigantic PDF with small print. But nevertheless, those are in front of you, and Mrs. Stock is going to be updating that final packet in, online, as soon as the board meeting is over. They just got released yesterday, so they couldn't appear in the packet. So with that, it's just an information item, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Got a question on page 122.
After extensive review. Look, I'm grabbing my packet. Dr. McCrindles out there paging through.
All right, if there's no questions?
I'd like to make a comment, it's not a question, but I, I do notice on the, on the dashboard, basically, a couple things that stand out, and if you do look at the dashboard, the district is doing quite well with proficiency, graduation rate, teacher retention, finances, as compared to the state averages. A lot of that's not a surprise, but some of these are, we're doing exceedingly well in those areas, and, and that's on page one, so if you didn't get to page 122 yet, you could, you could see that, but that's, that's, when you dig into the details, of course, you can, you could see how we arrived at, at some of those results, but, but this is really good, good news overall, and it's great to have this, all the schools commendable in one exemplary, so that's, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much, and we'll move to 5 dot 3, telling our story, data, pictures, in Huntley, 158, Dr. Schlichter, yet again.
Have me talking too much about it, because in just a moment, I'm gonna toss it to Dr. McCrindle. Just to give you a little background on where this is coming from, we've been working very closely with some of our Luda comparable districts, had, had some great sessions at the last Luda conference, and actually working with some of our ISBE consultants on just the idea that, yes, the state is adding these data points to a school report card, but that does not tell the story as we believe it should be told. So we need to continue, and, and obviously, Mr. Armstrong does this through our annual report, and through different ways of spotlighting in the media, but we really believe that we have a lot of rich data sources, and we have that district-wide, we have it for individual students. If you remember the H360 report card, where we looked at ways we could see different pictures of students and get a more well-rounded view. So this is going to be something that we anticipate talking to you about again, and likely might be a cycle, as the state releases report cards each year, that we're able to share our data picture with you in a way that's just a little bit more, I think, transparent, but a little bit more detailed and comprehensive than what we feel the state has provided. We just, I think, no district likes the idea that the State Board of Education is telling their story, because we know our kids are unique, we know that our, our challenges and our celebrations are unique, and those don't always come through in what the state posts online. So this will be the first time that we're really walking through it. Dr. McCrindle has done an absolutely fantastic job, and a ton of really quick work on all of this relating to the school report card, but also pulling some key data points that we just wanna share with you today. Now, just a couple of caveats, we use data for lots of different purposes, so our teachers use it to guide instruction in the classroom, that is really detailed data use. Our buildings use it to build a school improvement plan, that might be grade level, subject area, again, very detailed and digging in. At the board level and the community level, we use it to paint a picture. So the stuff that you're gonna see today, when you look at some of the charts that Dr. McCrindle has, just logically, there's gonna be pieces your eye gets drawn to, and you go, oh, wait, why is that? Or, oh, well, what's, what's happening there? And that is an absolutely logical question, and those are things we're digging on, so feel free to pose that at the end when she's done, but we're also gonna kind of focus on that broad picture, and then, as we go back and work on our school improvement plans, be digging in on some of those details. Does that make sense? All right, with that, I'm gonna toss it over to Dr. All right, with that, I'm going to toss it over to Dr. McCrindle.
Thank you, Dr. Schlichter. So as Dr. Schlichter said, we're just beginning to tell our data story, and we wanted to present it to you from our angle. So if you take a look at this quote, Dan Heath, he's the author of a book called Switch. It's about change and change management and how do you make change good, I guess. And his quote says, "Data are just summaries of thousands of stories, which in turn help make the data meaningful." And so data is important because it helps us tell a story, and we want to keep that in mind. As we're looking through the way the state is telling our story, they're telling us information about student growth, ELA proficiency, math proficiency, the climate survey, absenteeism, ninth grade on track, EL progress proficiency, college and career readiness, but we have a lot more that we want to tell that story with. We have great things going on. We have dual language, we have medical, or we have different academies. We have blended classes, one-to-one, a competency pilot, and great student experiences. So many things to be proud of. And at the root of all those are the students that we work for each and every day. So as we're looking at the data, we have to remember behind each piece of data is a child, and that tells a story. And we want to dive deeper into that to truly understand how do we meet their needs. So then as we're looking at data, it all originates in really thinking about and asking the right questions. So that's much of the skills. What question are we trying to analyze? Because we can make data tell us different things. We've all done that. But based on the question, it helps frame it. So one question we want to start with tonight is, how do our students perform in ELA, English Language Arts, over time? So here in Huntley, we use AIMS Web. That's a local universal assessment that's given to all of our students, K-6. We have PARC, which is a state accountability assessment, and the SAT. We have other assessments, but these are the three we're going to focus on tonight. So just as a reminder, AIMS Web is a universal screener, and the purpose of it is to measure our students' progress in reading and also in math. We give this to all of our Kinder, to sixth grade students annually, three times a year, so fall, winter, and spring. And what it helps us do is it, it helps us identify those students who would be in tier one, which means most students that would benefit from our normal core curriculum in the classroom. Tier two, which would be students that might need a little more help with small group instruction, or tier three, those students that might need more intensive intervention. So as you look at this slide, this is showing our kindergarten classroom last year. And what's exciting is, AIMS Web is the first piece of data we really have on our kindergarten students. So in the fall, on the left, you're seeing that this is where these students begin, when they come to us from whatever their schooling experience or home was. So if they went to preschool, if they stayed home, if they were in daycare, here's where our students began last year. We had 237 students in tier one, 175 in tier two, and then 185 in tier three. But then you see by the spring, when they take that same assessment, how many students that we were able to move from that tier two and tier three into tier one. And that's something to celebrate. The same is true, you'll see in first grade, and this is our early literacy. And you might wonder why fall is, again, a little more colors and more students in there? That's normal, because the standards change, what grade level, what were, the norms are holding them to change, and so you're going to see students look differently in the fall. And we want to be looking towards the spring to see how they move. You're going to see the same story throughout every grade level as we look through this in literacy. So second grade, we consistently show those same trends, where more and more students are moving into tier one. And what's interesting is in second grade, you can see about almost 90% of our students by the end of the year are in that tier one group. And AIMS Web's norms are set at 80% being tier one. So that's something to celebrate as well. Third grade, very similar. Fourth grade, the same story. And then by fifth grade, this is very exciting too. By the end of the year, we have four students in both the tier two and tier three. I couldn't get it to show the number big enough in those, so we combined them. But four students, so eight students last year, that were performing in the tier two and tier three range. So then we go to sixth grade. So that's an exciting story to tell as we continue to move our students through with reading. Another assessment that we look at is PARC. And this is just to remind us, it's our state accountability assessment. It's given to third through eighth graders in our district, and it's in ELA and math. We've had it for three years, so 2016, 17, and 18. And the purpose of this assessment is for the state to measure if our students are ready to move on to the next grade according to the norms that they set. And then the students are then placed into some categories. There's five options, exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, approached expectations, partially met, and then did not yet meet. What we've done here is we've put the three years over time, and you'll see that, when you look at an entire column or a bar, you'll see that that's all the students in our district. And then we've given the number of students in the different categories. So blue is exceeds, green is meets, yellow is approached, orange is partially met, and red is did not yet meet. And then you'll see this is the same grade level, but different students. So third grade, but what does third grade look like in 2016, which is a different group of students in 2017, which is a different group of students in 2018? What we noticed here, which is exciting, is that we do a good job of moving those green students, if we're just going to go by color, so colors, met, the students meeting, into exceeds. So we, we do move the top, and we are able to move some kids over there. We also, if you look between 2017 and 2018, we decreased that did not yet meet expectations by 50%. So if we're looking on either end of our bars, we're doing a great job of moving kids up and out of that category. You'll see the same is true in fourth grade. This is the same view, same grade level, different students. And again, you see that we increased the number of students exceeding expectations and decreased the did not yet meet. In fifth grade, as we move through here, you'll see that we maintain the students that are in that exceeded category and that met expectations. We continue to decrease that did not yet meet. But a question we want to ask ourselves is, how do we start to move some of those students that are in the yellow and the orange up to that green? And so that's a question we just would want to pose. As we look at sixth grade, you're going to see in sixth and also eighth grade, they're pretty stagnant in the, the way the charts look. So a question, you know, that we would want to ask ourselves is, as we're looking at the fourth year of data, because three years is hard to really find a trend, we're able to start to trend that, but by the fourth year, we'll be able to truly say, is what we're doing helping increase or not? And if it is staying stagnant, we'll be able to take a look at that more. But seventh grade, we're really excited about. If you take a look at this, these are the seventh graders in 2016, and then that same grade level, but different students in 2017. Look how many students moved into the blue in seventh grade. And then also, look at how many students moved from the yellow to the green. And they do that again the next year in seventh grade. Different students. So there's something there, we want to try and figure out what they're doing, so we can replicate that and really figure out, how do we help continue to move our students And then eighth grade, as I talked before, is very similar to sixth grade. We have questions, you know, if you look at the red between 17 and 2018, we're increasing the red right there. Many questions we could ask, they're eighth graders, the type of assessment. PARC is on one given day. If that was a bad day, how does that really look? There's a lot of questions out there that we could look to for this, but it's part of our story. So the next one we're going to look at is the SAT. And just as a reminder, the SAT is a state accountability assessment for ELA and math for our high school students in 11th grade. We've been giving this to them for two years, so 2017 and 2018. What's exciting is next, or this year, we're going to actually begin to give the PSAT 8, 9 to ninth graders in the spring, and then the 10th graders will take the PSAT 10, and then the 11th graders will continue to have the SAT. So we'll begin to, we'll be able to start to look at growth and see those changes throughout high school. Right now, we're kind of just with that one grade level, junior year is all we have to really measure at this point. And the purpose of the SAT that Illinois is using it for is to help show us student mastery on the Illinois learning standards. And they also place students into four categories, so exceeds, meets, approaching, and partially meets. It's important to note that they have different cut scores than the college board does for the SAT. And we're going to show a slide later that kind of shows that comparison. They, meaning Illinois. So here is the SAT, and this is our scores over time. So 2017, 2018, that same distribution that we've seen in the other slides of the number of students who partially met, the number of students who approached, the number of students who met, and the number of students who exceeded. It's hard to find trends, we're just reporting this data to you at this point. After a third year, we'll be able to start to say that, and especially as we have different assessments like the PSCT 8, 9, the PSAT 10, we'll be able to look at that more. Here is us compared to the state of Illinois. So we're using the Illinois cutoff scores, and Illinois is on the right. This is 2017 data, so the first year we took this. And then we are on the left, and you can see we outperformed the state with 58% of our students meeting exceeding compared to 40%. You'll see the same true for 2018. Again, we're on the left, and Illinois is on the right. We continue to outperform the state. And then here's an interesting slide. So on the left, this is where we would be according to college board's cutoffs, and on the right is where we are according to Illinois's cutoffs. Which is a whole different story to tell. So just to sum up ELA, a couple of the celebrations that we really are excited about is that our K to six students, we show a high percentage of students moving throughout the three tiers, with 98% of our students ending in tier one on AIMS Web. That's exciting. In third to fourth grade, we have fewer students in the did not yet meet expectations, and we keep moving students into that upper range of performance categories. And then in seventh grade, we consistently see that more students move into those upper performance ranges. And for the SAT, we do see a majority of our students in the upper performance ranges. So guess what? We get to go into math. It's very similar, but math. So now we're going to answer the question, how do our students perform in math over time? So again, we have AIMS Web, our universal local assessment. We're going to look at PARC, we're going to look at SAT. Reminder, AIMS Web, three tiers. Do you need me to go through this again? Are we okay? Okay? So this one's a little different look. So we do not give the entire battery of assessments to our Kinder and first grade students for math for many reasons. One part is time, and kindergartners on the computer taking assessments or getting assessments, and the amount of time with assessments, we haven't chosen to do that. It's something we've discussed in the future, but, so what we have to do to report out on this one is, we can't give you an overall, here's three tiers. So we have to look at the two different assessments they take. So on the left, you'll see the number naming fluency from the fall compared to the number naming fluency to the spring. And the way they distribute those scores, meaning AIMS Web, is they give us a well above, an above, an average, a below, and a well below. Loosely, anything average above and well above would be that tier one, the yellow would be your tier two, and the red would be your tier three. And then you'll see the same for, on the right of the line, we have the quantity total fluency fall assessment. And you see your fall versus spring. And it's the same story. We consistently move students higher up into those performance ranges. The same is true for first grade. What's exciting there is on that math fax fluency, which is one-digit math fax, we are almost at 90% of our students being average or well above with that. Then in second grade, you'll see that this is like the charts we were used to. So in second grade, we begin to give the complete battery of the math assessments to our second grade through sixth grade students. So it's a very similar story to what reading was. You'll see that we have a majority of our students in tier one. First, third grade. And fifth grade. And again, we're down to 18 students in the yellow and red at fifth grade. Sixth grade. And what's important to note is, in the buildings, principals and their teams of teachers are drilling down and saying, who are those students and what can we do to best meet their needs? So that's what they're doing if they're in their building levels and with their school improvement plans and trying to really set goals that will help us move along.
Can I ask a?
Yeah.
It's kind of a fundamental question, but for the AIMS Web, these, these fall and spring tests are pretty much the same test. It's not like a, a beginning sixth grade assessment and an ending sixth grade assessment, correct? Or is it?
It depends on which part of the assessment it is. So some yes, some no. So some do change with the expectations, but they're normed to where they compare them to the twen, to the percentiles nationally against where they are in the school year. So yes and no. So it's not the exact same necessarily.
Kind of sorry I asked the question.
No, you're fine, sorry. It's not the exact same necessarily. For some of the, within math, there's different assessments we take. So some might be the exact same, but some do adapt.
Yeah, I guess my point is that, whether it's reading or math.
Yeah.
You would expect any student to improve from fall to spring.
Correct.
For the same test. But if it's, if it's, this is where a beginning sixth grader should be here in the fall, and this is where an ending sixth grader should be here in the spring, that would also seem to me to make sense, but then it's, you're not comparing apples and apples, you're comparing apples and oranges.
Right.
Or green and yellow.
The, the way they've set the norms allows you to compare the apples to apples, but the assessment does change. Do they adapt the norms to allow the apples to apples?
Okay.
If that makes sense. On certain ones, some are apples, apples and some are...
That was just bugging me through all the graphs.
Yes.
I figured I had it.
No, good question.
Sorry to bother you.
No, not a bother. PARC assessment, again, third to fifth grade. We give it for ELA and math. We've had it for three years. And you'll see this is the same third grade, third grade, but it's different students. For math, we've increased the number of students in the blue from the green, but we've stayed stagnant with those kids in the red. In third grade, but we've increased the number of students in the green as well. Very similar for fourth grade. We increase the number of students who are exceeding. We start to close that gap between the yellow and the orange into that blue area or green area. And then in fourth grade, they decrease their red considerably. Fifth grade, you can see there is that increase of students into the blue, but the bottom part of our bars are staying stagnant. So the question is, what can we do to help increase and move those students more? Sixth grade, again, this is when we want to see a fourth year to see if this continues to trend where that green shrinks, to be able to say if this is a trend line, or if this is something that, hopefully we can increase that. But we're staying stagnant there. Which six, in ELA, we saw the same thing, so it's just a question to say what's going on in sixth grade. Seventh grade, you see a slight increase of students with the green. The blue remains stagnant, has a little growth between the three years. And then our red and orange stay pretty much the same. And then eighth grade, you do see more students moving into that blue area, which tells us we're, maybe we're doing a great job with our students that are high achievers, but then again, we want to try and hone in on those students in the middle, and how can we start to push them into that met expectations category? So the last one is the SAT for math. And you'll see that this is our math scores over time, and again, we're just reporting our scores to you. We can't really tell a trend yet until we have multiple years of data, another year in there. We remain the same. And this is set on the Illinois cutoff scores. Here's how we compare to the state of Illinois. You'll see we outperform, again, the state of Illinois in 2017 on the left is us, and the right is Illinois. And the same view in 2018, we're on the left, Illinois is on the right. And then a last look at how we compare if we were to use the college board cutoffs on the left compared to the state of Illinois on the right.
If I could jump in here.
Yeah.
I bit my tongue on, on literacy.
I was waiting for that.
I can't do it on math. I just, I want to point out that the SAT college board is the gold standard for measuring college readiness, and if...
college readiness, and if the SAT college board says that 70% of our students are college-ready, and if the state of Illinois has chosen some other trade benchmark for, because they want to be more stringent without great explanation as to why, it raises questions. I think that it's a huge celebration that by college board standards, we're producing 70% of our students that are college-ready, and I just, I don't want to pass that celebration on just because Illinois is criticizing our assessments.
If I could just actually even add to that, because I was biting my tongue too, is that when you think about scores, so you take, our 700 students took this test, a score is a score, right? It's just a score. And our ECRAs consultants, as well as our comparative districts, some of whom become very, very heated about this topic, having been at some of these Chicago-area district meetings, it is political how the lines are set, the cut points. So we could all have a range of scores, and depending who is placing those cut points where they are, we could be meeting, we could be exceeding, we could be below. It's worth pointing out that in Park, some of those, there never used to be an approaching expectations group that they would even designate, and the meets and exceeds that were from the old system would have been someplace in the middle of that approaching group. Now, I'm not saying it's not based on data, there is rationale, although I have to say I have not heard any rationale for the Illinois cutoffs on the SAT. Why is it different? We truly have received no answer on that, which makes people a little upset because we feel like it's not presenting an accurate picture of our students. But even on Park, just knowing that those lines are, of the meets, the exceed, the approaching, those are man-made, so to speak. Those are lines that we've drawn, not something that the data tells a pure picture. And so we just want to point that out because it's something that we're constantly considering. Some of you might remember when they changed the ISAT cut scores way back, and all of a sudden, everybody was performing at about 30% lower. Nobody performed worse. The line just changed. And so there is that piece, and Dr. McCrindles is making a great point, that it's really the point of view of that entire arc of the story that we focus on, and then in the buildings, we focus on the improvement pieces. But with Dr. Rowe, we've spent many conversations just questioning why we need to have these different cut points.
I don't mean to hijack your wonderful presentations, but I do have a theory on that, and I think it has to do with Illinois having to compete with the rest of the nation on college readiness, because that's becoming a big issue of how states are doing once you dump them into the college pool, sending your kids off to different universities across the country. So that's my guess. Of course, it's an uneducated guess, but that's my theory.
So just to summarize what we can celebrate about our math performance over time, in K-6, again, our students show high percentage of students who move through the three tiers of support, with 98% of them ending in Tier 1 on AmesWeb. In grades 3 to 5, we consistently move more students into those upper performance ranges. Again, in 7th grade, there's something going on there, where those students are increasing the number of students in those upper performance ranges. And then for the SAT, we've maintained our performance over the last two years, and to help support Dr. Rowe's point, we outperformed the state, and also, college board sets in all US and international test takers group, and we've outperformed them consistently, according to college board. So just as a reminder, this is just a first, big-picture look at this, but with all this data, there's a lot of different stories, and that's what our building principals are working on with their school improvement plans, and our teachers with their, with our PLCs, and then they're drilling down to the students and trying to say, what can I do for this child to help move them forward, to help make that data more meaningful? That's me.
And although I question the state of Illinois' intentions for setting their standards, I am, I do feel that I need to compliment them on how we're incorporating growth in determining these state, these school designations. That is a very nice change, and it's allowing one of our wonderful schools, Leggie, to make huge strides in instruction, and therefore academic growth, which earns them that exemplary designation, which we're all very proud of. So I am happy to see that we're making steps in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Even if the system is overly convoluted.
Noted.
Had to get that in. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. One of the things that bothers me about this is, maybe bothers me a little harsh, we're looking at each individual grade, but every year, the group of kids change. So we have the 3rd graders that become 4th graders that become 5th graders, but we're comparing 3rd grade versus 3rd grade, and your student pool, your population, is actively changing year on year. And those numbers didn't get discussed. And so my curiosity is, how did the class of 2022 do? How did the class of 2023 do as they matriculate through each grade? And that's where my curiosity is, because that's, to me, that's recognizing that that group of kids in 3rd grade, if you had 20 or 30 kids in that red category, how are they moving forward in the 4th grade and getting those needs addressed into 5th grade, so that by the time they get into middle school and high school, things are not as much of an issue? So that's kind of, and I've seen these numbers for a while, and that's something that I keep going back to, is wanting to see how those kids are doing year on year, rather than, let's take a look at how 3rd grade is doing, and that's nice, but I want to know how those kids are progressing as they get older.
So I'm glad you asked that. We actually, if you look at revision 1 of our presentation, it was about 85 slides, and it had all the cohort data in there. So we do have all that pulled for our students, and we are absolutely happy to share and make sure we have that as a part of our conversation, because that's something we do take seriously. We want to look at our students. How did you progress from 3rd to 4th to 5th to 6th to 7th to 8th? And what we found when we were going through this, just to decide what to present tonight, was the trends that you see, and just in general, in 3rd grade across the board, you see with our students going up. So as a student goes from 6th to 7th grade, their 7th grade scores increase in multiple cohorts. You see that consistently, some of the stuff we pulled out, but we absolutely have them all done, we can definitely share those and take a look.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, no, good question.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess maybe a repeat of Mr. Flex's question. The, like, the fall measure and the spring measure, if you were adequately successful, whatever that means, would those numbers be the same fall to spring?
And on AmesWeb? Sorry, I think that's what you...
Well, most of the graphs, I mean, the principle of comparing
Yes.
entry in fall and entry in spring, if you progressed one grade successfully, and just that, no more, no less, are those two bars the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So even with Park, you're able to show, here's the expectation in 3rd grade to 4th grade, so same thing, yes. And they shift the cut scores based on what those norms should be.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, and we will move on to Human Resource Committee, Mr. Gentry.
Okay, first item up is item 6.1, monthly HR resource updates, Mr. Zier.
So just some quick updates, spent this past month on completing a lot of reporting for ISB that comes through the HR department. We are preparing Monday to go live with our new online enrollment platform for open enrollment. So I'm looking at about 1,000 people over the next couple of weeks on going into that new system and testing it out. So we flipped the switch, actually, the other day in a private setting, but we'll push that out to our staff on Monday, and so we're very excited about that, to give them a different online enrolling process. So that's going to be a big lift for our department as we get used to new software, answering new questions, and supporting the staff as they go through a very important part of their employment over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, any questions on the update? If not, we'll move on to 6.2, Campus Resource Officer, Mr. Dean.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm going to start you guys off with a phrase, please do not snicker at this one, as I have in the past. It does take a village or a community to raise a child. As I have gotten older, I am a parent, I am a community member, I was a prior law enforcement officer, I am now the chief security officer of this wonderful district. What I'm looking to do is I would like to enhance one of our layers of safety by adding two resource officers, two school police resource officers at our Reed Road campus and our Square Barn campus. Unfortunately, society has changed, and the traditional school safety platform has changed, we have to change with it. With these additions, not only would District 158 be in a better position to service those in need on each of our campuses, but would better increase our efforts to build a safer community. Okay? Let's get into the meat and potatoes of adding two additional campus resource officers, working together to provide a safe learning environment. To give you a little background, we have had a school resource officer at the Huntley High School for almost about 20 years. It's a long time. Transitioning from DARE to LEAD the Way over at our Leggie Elementary School. For those of you who do not know what LEAD the Way is, it's learning, effective, assertive, decision-making. Okay? DARE, although that is a good program, it just wasn't the right puzzle fit for District 158. So it was, a new program was adapted to fit our district by the Huntley Police Department, which, to give you a little recap, talks about tobacco, marijuana, alcohol, medication, peer pressure, being assertive, bullying, cyberbullying, internet safety. So with our traditional DARE kind of focused on the drugs and the alcohol. However, though, with this LEAD the Way, it talks more about our internet safety, cyberbullying, and more things that are up to date at this time. Also, with our SRO presence at the Huntley High School, it has become a flexible, or sorry, reliable fixture at our Harmony Road campus, providing multiple levels of support. Now, when I say support, mainly at the high school, we're talking about additional support with maybe safe driving, dating violence, presentations on the effects of vaping, and being a good teacher, being a good counselor out there as well, and in some cases, does have to be a law enforcement enforcer out there. I got to keep up with my slides, I'm sorry about that. What are the benefits of a school resource officer? A police liaison support in potentially sensitive situations. As we have moved in society, some of those sensitive situations could be a risk, safety risk assessment, could be working with the Department of Children and Family Services. So this offers us a good liaison support for those, for our school district. Educational support in the classroom, like I already talked about, the safe driving, digital citizenship, social media, building strong relationships with students and the community. Has become an important team member, and I emphasize team member, at our high school and with their administration. It is becoming a recognizable resource at Leggie. That is one thing we are trying to enhance, is making it a campus resource officer. I know that that individual is out there when needed, but we want to kind of enhance that for being more recognizable, being over there to help out with any kind of additional needs that staff or administration may need. What is the purpose for this expansion? Be proactive. In safety and security, sometimes it's tough to be proactive, we kind of sometimes have to be reactive, but this is a great opportunity for us as a school district to be proactive with all of our campuses, all three of them. Teachable situations align LEAD the Way with, at all of our campuses. Two of our campuses teach LEAD the Way, one of them does teach DARE, so we kind of want to align and keep that consistent throughout our whole school district. Additional layers of support in the educational resource, administrative support for safety and legal situations. For the community, rapid response, relationship building, and again, continuing that education piece of what a school resource officer stands for, being a teacher, a counselor, and sometimes being an enforcer. And I use that term enforcer loosely, I know some individuals think that always has to end up with some kind of criminal discipline at the end, but it does not have to be. Okay? That's why we work with this individual, who will work in conjunction with the administration. What is this structure for this expansion going to look like for us? To be housed at the middle schools, we'll teach LEAD the Way program in the elementary schools, we'll provide safety instruction program to the elementary and middle school students and families. We'll become regularly visible in the middle and elementary school buildings, and building that strong relationship with students and families. We'll devise building administration on school-based and community-based situations through the legal lens. We'll provide a more rapid response to campus buildings in the event of an emergency. Now, what are our next steps going to be? Looking to seek a consensus from the board of education to engage in official talks with the Lakin Hills Police Department, along with the Algonquin Police Department. And also, I would like to, at a later date, seek the approval of our proposed agreements with both of those entities. I open the floor for any additional questions, or Dr. Rowe, if you have anything to add to that.
I just would add that, you know, thank you, Mr. Dean, for your work on this, and Mr. Dean and I have been talking about this for quite some time, and I'm really excited about our opportunity here. And I just want to stress that opportunity that Mr. Dean began his presentation with, that our opportunity is to be proactive and not reactionary, which a lot of times, when it comes to school safety, we find ourselves having to respond to something horrific, or potentially horrific, or very scary for our students to deal with. And what I'm excited about, you know, with your permission for us to move forward, is our opportunity to give our families the, you know, the sense of security that we all have, knowing how our buildings function, to those relationships that I've seen firsthand that have developed at the high school with Officer Gregorio and Officer Cirks prior to his arrival. And knowing middle school students, and as I'm really getting to learn and enjoy elementary students, the relationships are easier to form because they're so much more open to engaging with people, and their guard's not up like high school students are. Officer Gregorio works extremely hard to get in, inform these relationships with students, and I think our middle school students will really embrace a positive presence of someone who is there as an advocate for them, not a punitive response to a negative situation. Our schools are not dangerous, our schools are not filled with students that need police action on a daily basis. This is our opportunity to do something very positive, that I believe our community will respond very positively to.
Anybody have any further questions?
Just a quick question, and kind of what's the, what your views are on kind of the normal, the new normal these days in terms of other districts and what they do in the same circumstance?
Yeah, you know, our neighboring districts, in District 300, they do have resource officers in their middle schools, but we can afford the amazing opportunity to make it a campus resource officer, to go into our elementary schools. Obviously, there are some schools closer to the city that does have it in the middle schools, down south, as the majority of the middle schools are filled with resource officers as well.
Okay.
So it is, it is not necessarily a becoming trend, so to speak, but it's a way for us to be proactive.
Sure.
I think that's what's unique about it, that I think is, is interesting and unique to the approach that Mr. Dean is proposing, is that it's a campus
Yeah.
officer. So that, this, these people will be, you know, active and visible and engaging in our elementary schools, which, you know, which I think when they, when the fire department has been very visible so far this school year, and you know, I drive by Conley on the days of, that I see the officer there for, with DARE instruction, just, it's, it's a positive experience for our kids, and to have a familiar face back there every time, every single time, on a regular basis, I think that will go, that's what's unique about it, being a campus coach, and we have that luxury with our schools in walking distance from one another.
I have a comment, not so much a question. So we know too, statistically speaking, that when kids engage with a law enforcement officer on a regular basis, they have a better sense of security, and they feel like they can trust them more. So kind of like when, some of us, we had Officer Friendly, right? That would come and talk to us in our classrooms, and so, as we begin to get into middle school and adolescence, and then ultimately into high school and adulthood, we weren't afraid of police, or we didn't feel like it was necessarily a punitive thing when we engaged with them. So statistically speaking, and just, you know, from remembering as a child and then adolescence and so forth, I think that it gives them a positive reinforcement of a partnership with law enforcement as well. So I think it would definitely be a step... So I, I think it would definitely be a step in the right direction, and it's a positive thing for our children. And more, I mean, more so than just the safety aspect, but just reassuring our children that we're a partner with law enforcement community and we want them there.
Good. No, I think there's no formal action here, but I guess just kind of look across the table. If there's any concerns with pursuing discussions with the villages, and kind of, I don't sense any reluctance, so. But that, thank you. With that, we will hand it off to Finance Committee, Mr. Quaglio.
Okay. Seven dot one, we have our, our purchase orders, accounts payable, impressed, and disbursements listed. Any questions or concerns related to those items? We'll move those forward to the board for approval. Seven dot two, revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the first quarter financial executive summary. The financial story of the district, not as good as Amy's in curriculum story, but pretty darned good nonetheless. We, we continue to track within budget. You know, I think one thing to point out for the first quarter, certainly from a revenue standpoint, you know, we're, we're dead on at 25%. We're favorable on the operating expense side. Probably could be a little more favorable on the operating expense side, but for the last several months, we've seen a significant uptick in, in health insurance claims that we are continuing to work with our broker on to better understand those claims and to better understand if that is a continuation of prior year's large claims in the pipeline, or if there are new large claims in the pipeline. So we hope to hear back within the week on that, so that we can kind of monitor that moving forward. But that being said, even on the health insurance side, fortunately, we continue to track within budget as of the end of the first quarter, September 2018. The dashboard, love the dashboard. In a perfect world, everything would be at 25% and everything would be green, but the good news is, you do see a lot of red within the dashboard, but materially speaking and materially tracking, all of those revenue line items are tracking with prior year, and it's simply a recognition, timing standpoint as to when we recognize or receive the majority of those revenues, whether it's CPPRT, the IDEA grant, Medicaid, National School Lunch. Do not fear the red. We are still tracking as we have been with prior year. So that's the good news. And, and again, nothing really to worry about on the operating expense side of the house. So with that, if there are any questions with the first quarter executive summary, I'd be happy to answer those.
Just a couple of quick questions, looking at year over year on the revenue side. Registration is actually showing a decline year on year, which was a little bit surprising to see.
Yeah, and that, that, that is primarily, I think, from a collection standpoint. It, it's two reasons. It's a collection standpoint, but in prior year, we had also recognized first quarter revenue and booked a receivable, and this year, we didn't. I cannot quantify that difference of the receivable for you, but that's why throughout the year and prior year, we were carrying a receivable for those revenues. Thus, we recognize the revenue right up front, whereas we did not this year.
Okay. And then the same question on the salaries and benefits. When you look at it from just a year-to-date, prior year-to-date basis, it feels like that's a bigger gap than I would have expected. It is in line with budget, but it feels like year on year, it's a little bit too different?
And I could look into that, that difference. Certainly, a, a large portion of that would be health insurance claims on the benefit side. It also reflects, obviously, salary increases, but to your point, that is a pretty big increase. And I could, I can give you that answer. I could look into that. Great question.
Any other questions for Mr. Altmaier on his report? Okay. If not, we'll move to seven dot three is the monthly fiscal reports, Mr. Altmaier.
Nothing else to add on that? I did have an opportunity, or Debbie Solomon and myself did have an opportunity, to visit the high school and actually participate in the first and second period accounting classes. And that was actually a lot of fun for both Debbie and I. There was about 50 or plus students over there. And the goal of my presentation was to get them to love accounting. I'm not sure I did that.
Is only you could, apparently.
I am not sure I did that. I was pretty excited, though. Debbie would, I think, agree. But, but we had a great time, just kind of walking them through the opportunities with accounting and finance and, and the business degree in general for life beyond high school.
No, that's good. Good. Huge opportunities in those fields.
Yes. And it, and it's good to see, it's good to see we had two classes. Pardon?
From what I, it's a very versatile degree.
It's a versatile degree. I, I encouraged everybody to get their CPA.
Yeah, absolutely. No one should be without it.
There must have been a reason they took that class. So I just nudged them a little more.
Okay. Some of this stuff we'll go over, you have been further in the
Correct.
... presentation, so we'll hold off for that. Is there any other questions on his updates? Okay. All right. So we'll do seven dot four, levy hearing, Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. This is standard operating procedure. You know, and we'll talk about this a little more when we talk about the preliminary levy. But in accordance with the property tax extension law limitation, if we exceed 105% of the prior year's extension with the upcoming levy, we would be required to hold a levy hearing. But have, as we have done for the past several years, even though with CPI being significantly lower than that 5%, and even with adding new construction and ballooning our levy, we have still been historically below the 105% of prior year's extension. We still administratively feel that it's very good practice to hold a levy hearing. So this is simply a request to hold a levy hearing on December 20th to approve the final levy for levy year 2018.
Okay. And I think we're pretty much on board staying that, that course. Okay, that's, that's fine. I think we'll do that. So we'll do that forward. And then we can go to seven dot five, and you can tell us all about your preliminary tax levy.
Thank you very much. So you have the preliminary tax levy document in front of you. And, and this document, you know, there's quite a bit of data there. Will not change when we present this in, in December unless the board chooses to make a change. So let me give you just some high-level information regarding the 2018 levy. CPI again is for the second straight year at 2.1%. And that's for levy year 2018, as a reminder. That's for tax bills to be paid in calendar year 2019. And before new construction, the district will extend approximately $1.3 million of additional taxes associated with the CPI of 2.1%. With new construction coming in, a little lower than we had hoped, at seven, seven-plus million, we're hoping to extend again, that's an estimate, an additional $328,000 for new construction. So at the end of the day, the, the CPI at 2.1% plus the new construction of seven-plus million represents approximately $1.6, $1.7 million of additional taxes for the 2018 tax levy. That's at a very high level. Getting into the details a little bit, using the McHenry and Kane County Assessor estimated EAV reports, we generally, generally receive preliminary EAV reports from both Kane and McHenry County in the September, October timeframe. And based on those reports, EAV is expected to increase 6.32% to approximately $1.4 billion from $1.31 billion in prior year. Estimated new construction is approximating 7.4 million. Again, that is a preliminary estimate, which is a decrease from prior year's 19.9 million. That decrease is really driven by the lack of residential lots available for sale in McHenry County for this past year. And it's also a little shorter than we expected, and we talked about this at the last several meetings. You know, we did in Kane County have quite a bit of commercial new construction, but we're just not yet seeing that on the tax rolls yet. That could be, you know, it, it's a factor of many things. It's a factor of Kane County not always getting the number right until the final numbers pass along to us. It's also, it's also a function of, you know, many of those new commercial buildings that were being constructed, weren't necessarily constructed as of January 1st, 2018, right? They, they were completed throughout the year, so those dollars are prorated. And they also represent for many, the Alden facility, for example. Based on its, how many folks are currently living in there as of year end, also comes into play with the final assessed value by the assessor. So we'll see what that comes in as of December 31st, 2018, and we should have those final new construction numbers in the month of February, late February, so that we can move forward in March with the sign-off of the, the 2018 levy. What else can I tell you? Consistent with prior year, the 2018 levy, what we have in front of you and what we intend to pass on December 20th, is a ballooned levy of 1%. So we increase the levy so we don't leave money on the table if new construction does come in higher than anticipated. With a 1% balloon, the levy is in excess of the current estimated extension by approximately $650,000. And reverse engineering that, that's approximately $14 million of new construction. So new construction could come in at 21 million or so.
And we'd be okay.
And we'd still be okay. So administration, we are recommending to leave the balloon at 1%, as I feel that would provide us more than enough cushion. And I'm hoping we need it. I'm hoping, I'm hoping it comes in a little higher than seven. So with that, this is a recommendation to approve the preliminary 2018 tax levy, what you have in front of you. And we will do this again as of December 20th at the levy hearing, and then again, at the board meeting for final approval.
Okay. So, A, thank you for quantifying what the differential is, because it's an important figure to note, because this, I mean, this is, this is about as low as new construction as I can ever recall seeing. I mean, seven, seven million, we might add one year lower, but over the last 10, 15 years, it's, it's about as low as I can recall it. So I'm a little leery of, you know, are they, their estimate, is it how accurate it is? So I'm, I'm just throwing it out there for you guys to see, because 1% over a 2% is only a 3, so we're still not quite at, you know, still another percent or so below 5% increase in just, again, and it's just the potential, what the potential levy could be. The actual levy will be based on actual
Correct.
Increase. So does everybody feel comfortable, as the administration is, with just bumping it to 1% is the question? So I'm, I don't know, I'm ambivalent. And I'm just wondering, I'm like you, going 7 million a year lot. I think they're, they've underestimated, but...
Well, I, I think what Mark said is, is right, though, because a lot of these, a lot, there's been a lot more construction, but the certificate of occupancies aren't issued until later in the year. And with some, somebody like Alden that's based on the census, which really, we, we won't really see the full benefits of that until the next levy year.
Correct.
So I, I, I'm okay with this.
How much is the 1% worth again?
14 mil.
Yeah.
14 million in EAV, double, you know, three times that in fair market value. So it's 42 million of fair market value property.
42 in relation to?
To, to, no, to fair market. I'm just saying, maybe you have to be off of 42 million in fair market value. One-third is the assessed value for the 14 million of assessed value. I'm thinking, they can't, well, they can't be off that much.
What, what do you think, like 1.5?
I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not saying too. I'm just thinking hard about whether it, it should be from a safety standpoint.
From the last three years, what has it been?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I have a history of new construction.
Yeah, you do. What was it?
So bear with me. I'll go back to 2011, because 2011 was the last time we were approximately at 7 million of new construction. 2011 levy year was 7.7 million. And then I'm just going to go up the ladder here. 9.4 million, 2012, 10.8, 13. 2014, we started to hit the 17 million, 18 million dollar range. 2015, 18.8 million. 2016, that was the levy year with the TIF, 45 million.
And the TIF was worth how much?
24 to 25 million of that was the TIF. So we had new construction of approximately 20 million. Last levy year, 17.7 million.
So
Yeah, so this is a significant decline.
Pretty consistently below the total of 21 million it would take between the seven and the 14. So how do you feel about it?
One and a half.
You're a one and a half guy? You wanted to keep it?
Well, I, I'm as ambivalent as you are.
Okay. I'm going to tell you just safe and sorry, because it's, go to one and a half.
Okay.
Is what I think we need to do, just to be safe on it. Again, it's, it's more about perception and what goes out to the public, and they just see the levy being ballooned at a higher amount. But I don't, hopefully, we've always told the truth. I mean, we have always told the truth, and that hopefully. And so the numbers will come in and what they will come in, and we'll be fine with it.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and make that change. You'll see that for next week's board meeting. And we'll, I assume, pull that off a consent because of this change? Or do you want to leave?
No, you can leave it on. I think you
Leave it on consent and change it per board recommendation at the committee?
Jumping over to the truth in taxation, is that?
I will have to look at that. I, I still suspect it will be under
Oh, it will be
105.
Absolutely.
Um...
It'll still be under, and we're still having a truth in taxation anyway.
Hearing. The only thing we're not doing at this point in time is publishing the hearing, and we're saving
Right, right, correct.
We're saving some dollars on it.
And I'm presuming that's still below the full
If we need to, we're approving the hearing. So if we need to file notice, we can all always do that. That's not a problem.
Two, one, three, it's gonna get ya.
It's gonna be close.
Double check that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Double check it. And what I would tell you is, I would, I'm gonna qualify. I would, if it somehow got us to 5% or above, I would make it 1.4, 1.35, whatever it was, to keep it below the 5, is what I would tell you. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, for purposes of saving the cost of
Yeah, of publishing.
Yep.
Yep.
Still ambivalent.
Okay.
Oh, look, we have Ms. Psalm. You want to?
You did? Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
She is great. She is so good.
Awesome.
I would have liked, done that, but I would have not have been listening to anything.
Everybody is so mathematically inclined here, and you're actually paying attention and you care. So that's good.
Who else did a quick calc around here? Anyone else?
That's
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, appreciate it. So that's good. So we'll go at, we'll, the one and a half balloon there. Anything further on, on this, Mark? I mean, so our overall rate, just as you have it stated here, with the bond extension included, is, I know you have it here. What is it? It's, I'll find it. It's 5.4.
It's on the last page of the document.
Yeah, it's like 5.4.
5.4, correct.
Yeah, 5.4.
Which is a decrease from prior year's 5.5, too.
Yeah.
Driven by the increase in the EAV.
Right. And the actual bond piece of that is 77, okay, .77. So, okay, good. That's, just let go is that bond rate to be in that .75 to .8 range. So that's good. All right. So I'm personally, I'm fine with that, as we've stated, with just the one and a half percent increase to the balloon. So we're good?
Yep.
All right. That's what we want moved forward to the board. So, very good. We'll move on. If you were done, right? You were done, Mark, on that?
I have nothing else.
Further. Okay. Seven dot six is the Statement of Affairs waiver here. 7.6 is the Statement of Affairs waiver hearing. So what are we waiving here? What affairs did we add?
So this is the annual, again, standard operating procedures. As one of the only districts in the state of Illinois that actually asked for a waiver for this to, rather than publish it in the newspaper, we actually posted on our website, go figure. This year's a little different in that we've done this for the last five or six years, and every year that the legislators have approved our waiver, which has saved us several thousand dollars in the publishing of this document. But we do have the ability to ask for the waiver for a five-year period.
Okay.
And we've never done that. We've, we've gone through the paperwork, we've gone through the process annually. We've had it, you know, approved at the General Assembly every year. This year's a little different in that I'm asking the board to allow me to ask for a three-year waiver. Now, there's no guarantee that they're going to approve a three-year waiver, but there's no guarantee they're going to approve a one-year or a five-year either. But historically, they've approved this. In fact, I've had several legislators and people down in Springfield ask me questions about, you know, would I be willing to come down and testify? Because I think they want to, I think they overall want to pass a bill so that nobody has to incur this cost.
Well, they could do that.
They could, they should do that, and then we wouldn't have to do any of this. So, so I feel very comfortable with a three-year waiver. But I could always go to a five-year waiver.
Can we balloon that?
Or I could go back to a one-year waiver.
Can we balloon that by 1.5%?
We could do a lot, yes.
Here, here's what I'm going to tell you, three is fine. Again, you've got four seats or four years, so you might as well not overextend yourself beyond a full, yeah, so.
Okay.
Let's do three years, and that'd be fine.
Sounds good.
All right, so we'll move through three years waiver.
We will file the paperwork as such and. Move that forward?
Every once in a while. All right, something to justify that. All right, we'll move to 7.7, equipment declared as surplus. So what other overhead projectors and such do you have here for us?
Did not find any.
No?
I looked. We do have a tractor, though.
Okay. All right, we're actually, okay, so any, any questions or concerns from anybody on what we're going to lose here?
Just a quick question, where do the, where do the iPads come from?
The iPads? Um, I, I think, you want to answer that, Chris? But we do have a lot of iPads, I, I do believe historically from special ed.
Okay.
As well as, they might have been dated back to the Mary Olds timeframe.
Those iPads, being iPad version twos.
Yeah.
Going to look up the release date, they are probably eight years old.
2009, 10 timeframe.
Yeah, they're getting up there pretty far. Yeah, they're, they're generally speaking, they're special ed devices, student IP-based devices, those sorts of things.
Okay, thank you. Chris, would you mind just telling the board what we do with the Chromebooks?
I would love to, because there's a lot of Chromebooks on that list.
But if not, Chris and I were talking about it today, I think it's really interesting.
Yeah, there's a lot of Chromebooks on that list, and that's actually kind of a normal thing. So we buy our Chromebooks with the expectation that they're going to last three years with our students. And four years with a Chromebook is, is kind of too long. Two years is too fast, a replacement cycle, it's not a wise spend of money. So three years is what we shoot for. So you see a lot of Chromebooks on there, but we do something different with our Chromebooks that, that a lot of our counterparts, I'm hearing, don't do. By the time a Chromebook shows up on this list, it's really more of a shell of a Chromebook, because we've taken all the usable parts out of it and used them somewhere else. So we've been doing that since we started with Chromebooks to, to save money. So if you think about a student accidentally damages the, the screen on their Chromebook, we take the keyboard and all the other parts out that we can use. If they, they somehow lose keys off their keyboard to the point where it can't be used functionally, we take the screen and all the other good parts. To give you some, some idea of what this means, a screen replacement costs us about $40 to get a screen. In the four years or almost five years now that we've been doing specifically Chromebooks, we've purchased about 100 screens total. Some of our counterparts in nearby districts purchased that in a month. So we're really turning our, our devices around and really taking everything out of them that we can. It's also one of the reasons when you see us purchasing Chromebooks, we stick with a consistent vendor, because it's the same usable parts in all of them from year after year. So I could literally take a, a screen out of a Chromebook that's five, almost six years old now, and use it in the Chromebook we just bought. It's the same parts. So we're doing that in an effort to, to really save those dollars and make sure that it's a really wise spend of the money. Having, having spent $4,000 total in five years on screens is pretty phenomenal.
No, it wouldn't be.
That's a, kudos to the tech team for, for taking the time to, to go to the effort of, of parting these things out and really making sure we're stripping those dollars.
Okay, so which, all of that is good stuff. I am going to ask you the hard question. How much time, labor-wise, do we spend? And how devoted of a person do we have to doing this?
It's interesting, we've got, we've got, most of our tech team can completely dismember a Chromebook in a handful of minutes.
So they're like the pit crew within the.
Yeah, very much so. In fact, we, we had one of our techs, we, we had several of us meet up at the high school to, to try this ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and the guys that we have on the team at the high school can pretty much completely dismember a Chromebook in under seven minutes.
Blindfolded. Well, maybe not blindfolded.
Piece by piece, to the point where it's completely reused.
Chromebook chop shop.
So, yeah, we, yeah, it kind of looks like that sometimes. I would, I would say that the, the labor cost is nowhere near the savings that we're realizing by.
Okay, I had, I had to ask the question.
So when Dr. Budzinski said a group of us went to the high school and learned how to do this, it was Dr. Budzinski, myself, Mr. Rancosik, Kevin Harris of Food Services, and Debbie Solomon. And so the, the whole team learned how to dismantle a Chromebook and learned a little bit more about technology and what we're doing with our Chromebooks. Adam Dean, were you? Oh, you were there, yes, you were there, I forgot, yes.
All right, so maybe a future board demonstration, maybe a future board demonstration is, yeah, you can show us.
Yes, it was very valuable.
How about teaching, doing that and teaching a few of our students to do it?
I'd love that opportunity as well.
From, from keyboard, from keyboards to the screen, right? There's multiple components of that Chromebook that are being used, so. It's all great stuff out of technology.
Yeah, pretty cool. Okay. So we'll, thank you, yeah, for sharing that information.
Thank you for doing that organ harvesting.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, on to 7.8 is our revenue contracts. There are two, and I usually don't spend much time on these, but there is one interesting, interesting contract here. So help me out on the wrestling one, it seems a little different and interesting. Crowdfunding, so help me out. What, we, we're just looking for money, we're not selling dough, cookie dough?
We're looking for dough.
Like the boys' basketball, they're looking for dough, but they're not selling cookie dough like the boys' basketball. They're, yeah, so they're just looking at, I mean, they're not selling any, any wares here. They're, they're just going to try and raise money somehow? Yes.
Yes, I'm going to have to look into that one, to be honest. Is anybody here from, is, it's the high school, correct?
It's wrestling.
It's wrestling. Mr. Beal, are you aware of that revenue contract fundraiser?
Through athletic director. Okay, so it's just a little different take, I've never seen that in here, and I'm just, would be curious to see how they think that's going to happen.
Yeah, let me look in, I will bring to the board meeting some additional backup and information on that revenue contract. And I apologize. Normally, we attach that, so it's very clear.
Okay, so that item's going to get put off of consent, okay?
Tony, they, they have the name of the vendor too, if you want to look into that.
I got the website up here.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, I, I'd be curious to know why they chose that and how they think that's going to be more, because it's a different route, and it might be a really interesting route that other organizations, you know, other groups in our district can utilize. So that's the first time I've seen it. It'd be interesting to have them kind of talk about it and why they chose. Right, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
It's a little different.
I, I couldn't get.
All right, so that's going to move forward, but off consent. So we'll move it to building and grounds.
Okay, item 8.1, O and M updates, anything to highlight on here, Mr. Rancosik?
Yes, I got six points of light to highlight here. We had our regional office of education and fire marshal annual walkthrough at all our schools. We did very well on all our life safety reviews. We have very, very short lists of some, lists of some minor things to work on. Second thing I want to bring to light, we've got some new projects rolling out for bidding right now. We had a pre-bid walkthrough today, a good turnout for good vendors for our floor finish replacement bid. We've got an advertisement that just was released in the paper for pavement improvements for next summer. And we had final design review for roof replacements. All these projects were as reviewed with the board last February or last August. There's, there's some that were the leadership added value items, and then our life cycle items are all bundled together in that floor finish package. On the, on the matter of retail electric supplier, securing our electricity position effective our December meter read, we had a, a first run, runoff today. A board member designated authorized agent Paul Troy and I sat in a brief teleconference with some vendors, and I think it's our understanding, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, that they showed us another alternative procurement model, and we're thinking it's better to remain with the same kind of model. We're questioning the period because, segue to the next item. On the matter of when is our potential solar array installation going to be commercially, commercially operational? And, and we're looking at a position on our retail electric supplier of maybe seven, eight, or nine months. And as we get closer into the spring and the March, April shoulder months of energy procurement opportunity, we'll probably then have a better idea and be able to reflect and secure one, two months, depending on what we need to fill the gap. And we'll have a better idea where we're going. Because on the matter of solar, what we do know right now is that, is that our interconnection studies have been done, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. We now have interconnection agreements for all but one meter, and that one's probably a little bit stalled, because ComEd is working on the agreements for that one account. We have to make, not us, but Forefront will have to make a minor investment in replacing the transformer at this particular building right here to satisfy our design loads. And there's some other commercial paperwork that has to be done for that. But what all the other interconnect agreements that were executed Monday say is that Forefront had to put a calendar on them, and it looks like they would start construction in April, they're predicting, and they would have our systems become commercially operational in October of 19. And in fact, there's still a contingency there that they have to, you know, file for the retail electric supply credits, the solar energy, I'm sorry, solar renewable energy credits, and the incentives from ComEd for the inverters. And those applications, opportunities are yet to come. The, what we're seeing is that the lottery for the S-Rex, they call them, will open, and able to receive applications in January. So more to come on that. We're looking for a retail electric supply runoff, to step back a moment, a rerun next week. I got to talk to Paul later about a date, so we can secure that position for that's, the next coming month, part of a year. Soon to release bid specifications. New curtains for the, for the Performing Arts Center, it is time. I've been carrying a, a potential investment in my budgeting for a number of years, but it is truly time to replace those curtains. The curtains we have presently require cleaning and fire treating every so many years. I, I didn't give you an exact number there, because you can either choose to go ahead after three years and retreat them, clean them and retreat them, or you can test them. And we've tested them now, we've extended that three, close to three years beyond the first three years. And there is a lot of patches on the back of those curtains. They may look good on the front, gang, but on the back, they're not so pretty. And there's some other pieces in the back that are, need some serious repairs. Lori Woods and Nate Napke have been able to enlighten me about. So we're looking to get that out pretty soon. We're going to be going out to bid for replacement of portable bleachers, as I talked about recently with the storm damage. Our ground services contract, our ground service, management services contract is expiring in about two weeks. And so we have to get that one out in preparation, preparation for the next season, starting March 15th. So I've been drawing up some documents to release for that. And next item, the Fine Arts Committee for consideration and, and what Wold needs to hear from the, from the high school team. And they put a really nice team together, by the way, to, to have a, for a committee there, I find. We had a nice meeting last Monday night, evening, and, and it looks like we're going to need three more meetings, is what Wold's looking at after that first meeting, instead of two more, to get through all the discussion points we, we sparked there at that meeting Monday. And lastly, for the board to know, we have been looking, we've been recognizing that our partner in our new housekeeping contract, ABM, has, they're struggling still to keep a full staff. They actually do have a full staff for the first time in the last few weeks. They've been supplementing with overtime and a variety of things, but they've been struggling. And I really, as I, as I get all kinds of reports from them, including with the new model, I get certified payroll, I get all kinds of attendance reports, I talk to them weekly about what's going on, we review the roster regularly. And I think the economy just keeps ramping up on the demands of what, what's the minimum pay rate that's going to, this, you know, maintain interest and personnel? A lot of people they'll talk to want to come in, they schedule them for fingerprint, they never show up to start the process to be considered. So we're looking, they had put some extra positions in their, in their proposal to us, and, and they, in their positions, we haven't had in all the years we've had this. And, and we talked to them about considerations and maybe removing that, and what could we do to put some minor increases in the workers with the lower pay rates, not the administrators and the team. And we're, we expect to have something we can give the board for their consideration as amendment to the contract next Thursday night, on April 8th, about that. And that's all I have on that one, unless there's questions.
Okay, any questions from the board, committee? All right, thank you for the report. We'll move forward to 8.2, the air filter bid, please.
I apologize, there's a, there's a blatant error here in the recommendation. I do recommend that we award alternate A to the Brecker Company, alternate bid A, but alternate bid A is for less, it's for $55,215, Mike, I apologize. It's not for, the $66,900 number on there was the base bid A, not the alternate bid A. My sincere apologies. We learned something in the last nine months or so. We had a vendor come in, a local vendor, who suggested that we consider a different air filter. They thought it would save us money. And so we did a test, and we had a good place in the high school where we've got very similar air handlers, areas that they serve, and, and population load and potential dirt catch in those filters. And we ran our, our typical filter, and it ran a little bit better. It went maybe like, to like four months, and we changed them every three, and, because we were checking them every month. And this, this more high-capacity filter got to six months, and it still was looking decent. And I'm like, wow, okay, you got something there. So we put this alternate in the bidding, and in fact, we reduced it to a change three times a year, because I want to see it perform in all locations for a little bit longer before I go back any further than that. But interestingly enough, the filter itself costs a little more, but we're changing them three instead of four times a year, and ultimately, our net out-of-pocket cost is less on paper. Plus, what you don't realize is our labor for changing all the filters is also going to go down. We've got one of our second shift maintenance persons, the personnel that, that's all he does. Well, now he's going to have time, he can do other repairs for us, so this is a good thing.
Okay, any questions from the committee or the board?
More procedural things, so since this needs to be republished, do we need to pull it off consent agenda too?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that to the non-consent portion of the agenda for next week, unless there's an objection. And that's it for building and grounds tonight, community relations.
Okay, community relations and outreach, 10.1, annual report 2018, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you very much. I will be quite brief with my report here. I've shared the PDF of this document with you. This is just. This is just kind of a sneak preview at the annual report, which is our one big printed mailed piece that we send to the community every year. We used to do, if you recall, a printed newsletter four times a year. As we modernized our communications methods, we cut back on our printing and mailing costs significantly, went to one really nicely printed annual report that looks back at the previous school year. So, this looks at the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year, and not to toot my own horn, but this is the document that won two excellence awards from the Inspira Illinois Group. And I, I really am not tooting my own horn because I will say, my design skills are quite limited, is not my greatest area of expertise, but it's so easy to fill it up with really great stuff because we look at the academic, the financial, the operational, all the really wonderful things that are going on in our district. And I just basically plop them in there and it looks really great. So, this is also our way of reporting out to the community about how we are progressing with our strategic plan, annual goals and measures that we do every year. That's kind of the structure this takes, which is kind of distinctive in the, in your reports that I've seen from other districts. Most do not take that specific tact, and I think that resonates well with our community. So, just for the good of the public, we can walk through a couple of pages here. Starts with a nice message from Mr. Fleck, kind of sets the tone for the entire document with a theme, kind of continuity and change is the theme. Because last year, we did see a lot of change from the superintendent leaving to a change in leadership of the board, and, you know, many, many changes at all levels of the district, but maintaining the same consistent path forward. So, that's kind of the theme that informs all of the different areas that we look at here. Again, taking the structure, looking at the five broad goals of the annual strategic plan targets academically, learning environment, quality staff, partnerships with home and community, and finance and facilities resources. Just a little bit of a shift from previous years. Some feedback I got on it was that the reporting out on the individual strategic plan measures was terrific, but sometimes those are written in very academic language and they don't necessarily resonate with the average reader. So, this year, I tried to take those and make them a little more human readable and tell the stories that really highlight those successes instead of simply reporting out on the check mark, whether yes or no it was met. Did devote a whole bright page here to the solar project, which is obviously something we want to continue to highlight with our community. And then we have a couple of pages devoted to our impressive financials. And then just a couple of extra highlights of some of the really interesting things that we've got, or had going on for the last year. So, I'd be happy to take any questions on it, otherwise, that is it. I, I do apologize, I've forgotten to point out one very important fact, which is that I cannot take credit for this amazing cover photo that's actually our own. Mrs. Stock took that photo, and I don't know if there's a better photo that kind of encapsulates Huntley one fifty-eight than this photo. I think the excitement of the children literally running to the school because they're so excited to be there, being welcomed, being met by the staff where those students are, I think that's really a terrific symbolic image for, for this school district.
So, it was a Stock photo?
Yes, it's a Stock photo.
It was good. Do we, any questions for Mr. Armstrong? Comments? You did a, you did a fantastic job on that, Mr. Armstrong, thank you.
Excellent.
Toot-too, great.
Just one question, how do you do it?
I said I would keep this short, I apologize. I won't answer that.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Okay, we can move along. Board of Education, Mr. Pl.
Eleven point one, meeting minutes. We have our minutes from the October eleventh, twenty eighteen COW, the October eighteenth regular meeting, and the August second special meeting. So, if there's any questions, comments, edits to that, let me know. If not, we'll move that forward. All right. Eleven point two is the delegate assembly. Every year, we get together at the Triple I Conference and the Illinois Association of School Boards has delegates, one voting delegate from each school district, I think, what is there, eight, eight hundred school districts, is that the right number? Okay. We'll be at this assembly to discuss proposals and resolutions. We get a list of, of resolutions to consider. Now, I, these came out to the board to, to look at. I think we got three of those responses, so please get those responses in before the next, meeting next week. I do want to point out that, two things. First of all, when you say you're supporting a recommendation, if the, if the recommendation is to oppose the resolution, you're supporting the opposition of the resolution, okay? So, you're supporting whatever the, the recommendation is. So, and the other thing is, the first three resolutions have to do with student safety and protection. They are all very similar. The explanations that are in there that talk about that do say that they've, it sounds like everybody's agreed to combine this into resolution number two, but we are giving our recommendations on resolutions one, two, and three. Then what happens, Ms. Walker, this is your first year doing this, at the next meeting, we'll all get together. If, if we as a board are unanimous or virtually unanimous on, on where we stand on a particular resolution, that's how our delegate will vote. If it's close, we will debate it and talk about it at the next meeting, and then will be opportunity to persuade, and then we'll hopefully reach a, our own resolution on the resolution, and then our delegate will, will vote that way as well. Also, at the next meeting, we'll talk about who the delegate will be that will represent us at the Triple I Conference. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else to say about that, but please try and get these done before the next meeting. All right? Any questions, comments on that? All right. So, with that, yes, we will move on to item twelve, which is to go into closed session. So, it is seven fifty-four. At that, at this time, I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Sorry? Oh, then I won't, rather than say no second on that, and then we don't have to vote because there's no closed session. Okay. So, oh darn, okay. Then forget that motion, the motion failed because there wasn't a second. And therefore, we can skip item thirteen, and with that, at seven fifty-five, I will make a motion to adjourn. I think we got Mr. Quagliano on that. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.